... states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. A couple of things. I'm appointing Councilwoman Debbie White, Councilwoman Michelle Alexander, and Councilman Al Thurly to the group to work with the people from Knop Valley and Beazons to see if we can work that blasting situation out. I want to... Oh, yeah. Dieter called and wished everybody a happy New Year. Called me yesterday. And then I had the pleasure of wishing a happy birthday to Marie Dorsh, who celebrated her 100th year, I think today or yesterday?
Today.
Today. She's 100 years old and that was a neat thing. Tomorrow, January 4th, at the Tandinsky Center, the Commissioner of Revenue will be here and everybody's invited to meet with her or him. I don't know, is it him or her?
Myron.
Meet with him. He'll be at the Tandinsky Center at 7:00. Myron Franz, F-R-E-N-S. And then next week, a week from tonight, at 6:30 in the council chambers, staff will be... We'll have a public meeting, but that meeting will be for the purpose of staff bringing the council up to date on everything that's going on with the frac sand situation. It'll be not... It will not be for public comment. It'll just be a meeting for staff to give the information to the council and it will be on TV so people can watch it.
It's on Monday night.
Oh, Monday night, I'm sorry. Or next Monday. And we will shortly after that meeting, hopefully this month yet, the council will have a public meeting for the public to receive input from the public on the frac sand issue. So that's kind of our agenda for that. I think Judy, that's all I got.
A week from today.
Okay. You got anything?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Monica, call me once, please.
Mayor Miller. Councilman Thurly?
Oh, I do have one more thing. There's been some questions regarding the former city manager's employment contract as it relates to the $55,000 that the city is required to pay him, and I'll have Chris address that. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy New Year. And just at the time you hired Mr. Thompson as city manager, you entered into an employment contract with him. Part of that employment contract had a severance provision in it that provided for six months of salary severance in the event that he left employment with the city. And so, again, there's a contractual obligation that you're meeting through that payment.
Okay. Jerry?
And is it also, this is a standard practice for positions of that nature?
It's typical in the state of Minnesota for a city manager or city administrator position to have an employment agreement, yes.
And also in many cases, it goes beyond six months, oftentimes a year.
There are some restrictions statutorily for highly compensated employees that would come into play with something like that, but that's certainly possible.
Okay. Questions? Okay, thanks, Chris. All right, now Monica, call me once.
Alexander, here. Salyars, where's Jacoski?
Here.
White, here.
You don't care if I'm here?
Sure, he asked. He already marked you here.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is to consider vacating a portion of Outlet C in the Creekwood Phase 2. This is for the construction of a deck.
Okay, I'll open that public hearing and ask if there's anyone present wishing to consider vacating a portion of Outlet C in Creekwood Phase 2. Okay, just come on up to the mic, state your name and address, and you're good to go.
I'm Jerry Deleska and I live at 164 Janet Marie Lane, presently building at 192 Janet Marie Lane, which is in 196. These are the properties that we're asking for the vacation of the easements on that.
Okay. That's good. Unless anyone else, any questions? Okay. You want to say anymore or?
The two lots that we're talking about, A and B, are just barely on the far reaches of Outlet C. We're still 30 feet beyond that. That would give plenty of room for any utilities that may go there in the future. And we are planning on building a four-season room and a deck on that, just to make a correction on that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the vacating a portion of Outlet C in Creekwood Phase 2? Anyone else? George?
Yes, I went out there with Brian DeFrain here last week. I think Friday we were out there and looked at that and there are no major problems vacating this property, correct?
There are no utilities.
Right, right, so. In more or less, it kind of dips down into it, so there is... There is no problems with it, so.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak to the vacating a portion of Outlet 2 in... Outlet C in Creekwood Phase 2? Anyone else wishing to speak to the vacating a portion of Outlet C in Creekwood Phase 2? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I would so move to introduce the attached ordinance to vacate the city easement as described.
Move by George. Michelle seconds. Any questions or comments?
I know there's going to be a couple more of these coming. The attorney stopped in to see me.
We take one at a time, right? Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to introduce the ordinance regarding the vacating a portion of Outlet C in Creekwood Phase 2? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed? Carrie.
Under the petition's request and communications, item 3.1, frozen river film festival signs to be posted at Wyndham Park and Huffin 61 from January 9th through the 30th, and Mankato Avenue from the 17th through the 30th. Move to approve the request.
Move by Debbie. Is there a second? I'll second it. Come by Al, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the frozen river film festival signs. All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed? Carrie.
Item 3.2 is the Winona area ambulance service requests for no parking on West Second Street. Move of approval request.
Okay, move by Debbie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by George. Questions or comments? Al?
Just a comment. If this is indicative of some of the traffic issues we're having in that area, perhaps staff should take a look at a larger picture relative to what's causing this particular problem and if there are other places along that area that might need some attention on a, you know, on a regional or not just a hit and miss basis, but on a area basis.
Can I elaborate a little? Ryan?
This has to do with McRut's building there. It's more that they park a tractor trailer there, right at the edge, and they can't see. It has nothing to do with the frac sand at that position.
Okay. Oh, what McRut's got to score.
It's more McRut's parking.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to honor the request of the Winona ambulance service? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed? Carrie.
Item 3.3 is request to change the 10-minute parking to a loading zone at 159 East Third Street. Move of approval.
Move by Debbie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by George. Questions? Michelle?
Does this mean that spot can only be used for loading or unloading?
Correct.
Okay.
So the owners can't just park their car there, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to honor the request of a 10-minute parking to a loading and unloading zone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Under new business, item 5.1 is the orderly annexation request from Dennis and Patricia Nolan at 22220 Pinecrest Road.
I would move to approve the annexation request.
Okay, move by George. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jerry. Questions or comments? George?
When we get these requests, and there's a lot of them coming from that area, is it necessary to give us the whole history and all the paperwork of, you know, we get the same thing every time, we just, you know, we know what's happening here. I don't think we need to spend all the paper on that, or is there a necessity... Is it necessary to do that? Nothing changes.
Not really, except for the names of, of course, the people, but the actual resolution has to include as attachments the prior agreement upon which it is based. So we could certainly leave out that particular exhibit if you would prefer that and just let you know that it's based on the...
We've got all the Phillips paperwork and that's been years ago for the one house that's built out there, so.
Maybe we can just get an email copy of it.
Sure.
Or a reference or something.
Okay.
Just looking at saving paper.
Computer was supposed to do that, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the orderly annexation request by Nolan? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed? Carrie?
Item 5.2 is the telephone system upgrade, and I provided you this evening with an updated proposal, including the performance bond and sales tax. The total is now $63,527. We do have $72,000 in the budget for this project.
I would move to approve the attached purchase agreement.
Move by Al. Is there a second? Second by Debbie. Questions? Debbie?
Monica, for the administrative administration training, what's kind of the scope of that?
That is training for myself and one other person on staff. There's a new software that we can do the ads moves and changes in-house and change people's names in the directory and so forth.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the telephone system upgrade? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Carrie? When's the last time you got an update on your telephone, George?
Well, I just noticed on those Progresso ads, they're all talking on tin cans, so.
Item 5.3 is the certification of completion, final estimate, and resolution of acceptance for the Lake Outlet Pumping Station roller gate replacement project.
I would move to approve the attached resolution, accepting the Lake Outlet Pumping Station roller gate replacement.
Okay, move by George. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Questions or comments? I think this will help our flood...
Yes.
Our high water situation down there.
Now, there's another... Was this all the gates or weren't there two gates that they did not do or?
This should be all.
All of them, okay.
There's still...
Okay. Okay.
Debbie?
If I remember right, because we waited, Keith was saying we waited quite a long time to get this done and wanting to get it done. It was really needed, so pleased to see that it's ready to go.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the final estimate of the Lake Outlet Pumping Station? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed? Carrie?
Item 5.4 is the interim city manager.
Call on Jerry.
I was actually going to do this in one motion, but I think it's going to be better for two. So the first motion I'd like to make is to approve the interim city manager's salary to be at $100,000.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Jerry, second by Debbie. Questions or comments? All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed? Carrie, you got a related motion?
It may need to be a motion. Normally, we would just direct staff to bring it back, but since this is directly related to the highest person of staff, we may just have to... And I know we don't like doing motions that aren't in front of us, but hear me out on this. I think it'd be a good idea to bring this all back again, to review this in 90 days, not the salary and not... But to review where we want to go with the position in 90 days. In that time, we can decide if we want to go another 90 days to start a search, to do a variety of things. But I think it's fortunate to have Judy in the position today. Like to give Judy an opportunity of 90 days, and that doesn't mean at the end of 90 days we know what I'm getting at. So I think we need to revisit it. I don't want to revisit it any earlier than 90 days. So that's the rationale. The motion is that we revisit the position of city manager in 90 days to decide in which direction we want to go.
Okay. Move by Jerry, second by Debbie. Questions?
Now, the direction I'm talking about, we have a variety of directions. Do we want to go set up another committee to do a search? Do we want to continue as we are? For all we know, maybe the interim city manager will say at that point, you know, but 90 days will give us time to really feel things out. So we have a variety of options, but to look at them today, I'd like to give us 90 days and then we'll revisit and look at all the options that are represented for all of us, the city, the council, the interim city manager, et cetera.
Okay, that was the motion, second by Debbie. Okay, Debbie?
Are you looking at this as like a pre-council meeting type of thing then or?
Just in 90 days, if it could be...
Separate?
Don't know. We just will revisit in 90 days and we'll, I suppose, at a council meeting, and then at that point, probably a pre-council meeting is probably the best. At a pre-council meeting, approximately three months from now, then we can discuss it and then from there, we'll take whatever action necessary at the following meeting. Good point.
Okay, questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got a comment. I understand where you're coming from, Jerry, but I would like to see us take a look earlier than 90 days. I would prefer 60 days, so I'm not going to support your motion. I think we should get moving and make our evaluation, and I think it would be fairer to the community to do it in 60 days rather than 90, but I'm not going to push it. If that's the majority of the council on this motion, I would prefer, again, looking at it much sooner than 90 days.
Questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to bring back the... Revisit the city manager's position in 90 days and then decide what direction we want to go in. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Okay.
Under council concerns, item 7.1.
George, start with the east end tonight.
Okay, with the east end. Earlier this past spring, we were addressed by Mr. Roger Pompuk living down in McNally Townhomes in Crocus Circle there. Broke concerns about looking at getting that area out of a flood plain, and we were going to continue to look at it and things and, you know, where staff is at this. He's waiting to hear from someone from the city as to where this process is right now, if there's any movement made. No movement made, so if someone from staff can call Mr. Roger Pompuk and let him know where we're at on this. I know the last hire quite a while back that it was something with... Involved with the DNR, but a call could be made to him as soon as you, you know, someone from engineering or public works to let us know where we're at on that.
Sure. You want me to tell you where it's at right now?
Well, you can probably give us a, you know, a quick update right now, sure. And then let him know personally, you know, by phone call.
In a nutshell, Highway 61 acts as a dike, but it's not as certified as a dike, and it is in the flood plain because of the Mississippi River, and because Highway 61 is not a dike, it's considered to be not there, so to speak. Therefore, it'd be, I can't say impossible to get that area out of the flood plain, but it'd be nearly impossible without spending a boatload of money to get 61 dike certified. Not to mention the lake, dredge lake that they made for 61, to the east of Harley Davidson there, that's not a certified dike either. So kind of shooting ourselves in the foot twice in that area, and that's where... That's where we'd have the toughest time getting it certified from.
Okay.
So it's not very likely that will ever be out of the flood plain. Not without a dike individually around that subdivision.
Okay.
That'd be our only other option, but that leaves a lot of other people out of... Out of the protection, so to speak.
So I know at the meeting, I know the city was going to look at doing some things and trying to, you know, get that out of the flood plain, so...
Right, we were looking at the Pleasant Valley area until we found this out. Obviously, the '07 floods, we're aware of that. That came from Pleasant Valley Creek, and there's some things that we could do to help that out, but that would not get them out of the flood plain because of the Mississippi River.
Anyway, give them a call.
Certainly, certainly.
And, you know, update as to where we're at and if there are some avenues that we can explore or funding sources or whatever, as you mentioned, to... There's a bigger project we have to do, so.
Would the work on Pleasant Valley make it better, even though it's not out of the...
More than likely, it would make it better. They'd still be paying flood insurance every month.
Right, right, but it wouldn't make it better.
It would have the opportunity of an actual flood hitting them, be down.
Okay.
But flood insurance-wise, they would not see it that way.
Is there an option for them? I mean, I understand to actually get them certified, but whatever requirement that they have, or insurance carrier, or whatever the case may be, that may be an easier option if we could prepare, rather than getting all of those surface roads up to dike certified. You're right, that could be millions of dollars.
More.
Could there be maybe a supporting document that could assist these homeowners? Because, you know, it's approximately $1,000 a year, and it's... So something along that line, rather than, if we could think outside the box, if you could just let Mr. Pompuk know, but then is there another option? What does he need in supporting documentation, and maybe we can provide that?
FEMA would not look at it that way, especially with the Katrina-type stuff. If it's not a certified dike, they will not recognize it. Elevations are irrelevant.
I know, but some supporting documentation stating exactly what you just said, you know, it's still up to the homeowner if they want to get the insurance or not, or it's up to their... Who's... They have their mortgage with.
Right, the mortgage is going to be the dictator on that.
Right. But if the... Something to show whoever holds that mortgage. Find out what Mr. Pompuk... I mean, George is right. He was told somebody was going to get back with him and it kind of slipped through the cracks. If you can make a personal call, give them the bad news.
Sure, yeah, I'll call Roger.
But then find out really what he needs. Maybe it's some documentation, maybe it's something else, but, yeah, I think you're right. We can't go to the millions and millions of dollars, but it's a legitimate concern of those folks. They don't need it.
It's real money.
It's kind of a technicality, and it's averaging $1,000 a household.
Yeah, I'll call Roger up and we'll continue to explore it. It just might be just really tough rock to make roll.
Okay, well, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, George?
Would there be any funding out anywhere for that from anyone, from FEMA or?
FEMA's tiger.
Yeah. Or Minnesota DNR or whatever, so.
Something we can explore. There's funding out there for things of that scale. It'd be really tough to imagine. Something like doing the Pleasant Valley, we got a shot at. Something like recert... To get 61 certified, that's a wing and a par in my book.
Okay, so, all right. You know where we're at on that then, so. Wall Street, people are continuing to say, hey, it's a good project, thanks a lot. So I said three more to go, so. And if there's a possibility, well, I know there's a possibility, alongside where they put the gravel in, alongside of the tracks, there's gravel now with no snow. It's starting to spread all over a couple of blocks there. If we could look at somehow trying to get... I don't know if the sweepers are going yet, but if we could look at somehow trying to get that rock cleaned up, so, because she's really spreading out now, so. Thank you.
You asking for snow?
Yeah.
Be careful there, George. All right, Debbie?
Thank you. I want to share, I've received a couple, a week or so ago from my... Very lucky to have some close friends in Misano. It's called the Great East Japan Earthquake and Tsunami that happened in March 2011, and the pictures on here are incredibly moving and touching, and they also have lots of pictures, of course, where Misano is located in Miyagi Prefecture. And this is from my friends Hatsuie and Masato Marakami. And they did, I want to read just a very short, brief thing, their English is very good. But when it did happen, they do, of course, live in Misano, and he's a prior council member in Misano. They said they suffered lots of troubles. They had seven days blackout, 10 days cutoff of water supply, about a month shortage of food, and two months shortage of gasoline. They said now we are recovering the usual life under the hearty support from, first of all, the Winona people. So they wanted... And there's more. They wanted to make sure to thank all of us, you know, for the help that we did. I'm not quite sure, you know, like to share this, you know, or maybe leave it in the Misano room for a while. Be happy to do that, but it's some really moving pictures that they took for those 10 days.
Maybe the public library.
Yeah. Like I say, it will show Sendai and the places that are close to Misano and everything else that happened there from the beginning to the recovery. And it's in English.
Michelle? Nothing? Jerry?
On the 20th of December, we held a neighborhood watch meeting for the West End because of the three recent arson-caused fires. The meeting was incredibly well-attended, very successful. Well, success because a lot of people were there and there was tremendous interaction. A number of folks here were at it, and I appreciate that. We will have our next one, I think it's a Tuesday, the 17th? Do you have a calendar? Is that the... Tuesday, the 17th, at the same location, 6:00, Tuesday, the 17th, at the Legion Club. And since that's basket night, they said, please come hungry, but no, it was really well-attended, a lot of good information shared. So I really appreciate everybody showing up, and we want to keep the momentum going. Tuesday, the 17th, at 6:00 at the Legion. That's it.
Jerry, that is city council meeting night.
You know, then it's probably not the 17th. I'll have to get back with you guys.
Because Monday is Martin Luther King Day, that's why.
That's right, that's why I was thinking of...
Well, they'll let us know, right? They change it or what?
I don't want setting it up. Let's make it Wednesday, the 18th.
There you go.
No, that was easy.
But now you're not going to have basket night.
Next time.
Next time.
Bring baskets to the council meeting.
Yeah. Thanks for pointing it out. That'll be Wednesday, the 18th. Okay. And that's at the Legion.
Yep.
Okay.
Just like to thank the residents, Knop Valley, Whispering Pines, who were here before our regular meeting for their presentation, for their input, and it will be an interesting time to look forward to the issues, defining them and finding a solution that's acceptable to all involved. And I'd also like to thank the crews from city, I don't know if it was park wreck or streets or whoever, but they did a great job on the Christmas tree in Wyndham Park. Every year, you know, I think we kind of take it for granted it's up there, but I know they were busy with their snorkel trucks and stuff for a long... Not a long time, because they're efficient at it, but I think the end results were something that we all benefited from for this holiday season. So I'd like to especially single them out for their efforts and their hard work. That's all I have.
All right.
Under the consent agenda, there are three items. The approval of the minutes from December 19th, claim against the city by Catherine Crowsey, and a claim against the city by Darren Angler.
Would approve the consent agenda.
Move by Al, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jerry. All in favor of the consent, which is approval minutes and two claims, say aye. Aye, those opposed? Carrie?
Mayor, moved, we adjourn.
Moved by Jerry, second by?
Second.
By Debbie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carrie?
Thank you very much. You know, we should probably put out a press release on one little meeting.
I'll go tomorrow. Debbie, I have the notes to go out tomorrow.
Okay.
Robert Easy's better. I think if their mortgage is, if their mortgage is with somebody massive.
Nice.
Forget about it. Greasy the days.
All right, that'll be fun.
Take what?
Take greasy the days.
I don't know, because I think what if they flooded them? Is that?
We'll see in there that'll, I mean, you know, we.
I don't know.
Can we add that in there?
And just stress the.